So I call the meeting order and of course, uh, due to be no voting tonight. I do want to thank each and every one of you for being here. For always the courage, I'd just like to ask the question is, why is this room this full of everybody? Because that's the only way you're going to find out what's going on in town instead of listening Facebook or Twitter and everything. I encourage everybody, come, we need to get a bigger building, we will. But I encourage everybody, I did have two workshops on the Art Lucas Development. We had nowhere near this many people at both of us. I had one in the morning, one in the evening, so if you're working, person had time to hear, so I do welcome each and every one of you. First on the agenda is our road call. Everybody's looking for, even our mayor, Pro Tim. World traveler, I think he's been to Asia and Paris and a few other places this couple of weeks, but I'm glad to have him, I would have thought so with the others. Everybody has opportunity to look over the agenda. Do we see any corrections need to be made, any problems, any comments on the agenda? Okay. Next would be the minutes from our previous meeting that made fourteen work session and made fifteen, regular call meeting. Is there any comments, questions over the minutes?
No service today.
Okay. Uh, city manager correct, no public speaker tomorrow?
No, sir.
Okay. This time is on our workshop, allow people to want to speak to sign in. We ask you to come to the podium, state your name and your address for Clark, Sister Clark, and I thank you for filling in to get it. We ask you to keep it to three minutes if possible. First one is Ms. Louise. Ms. Louise Hooper.
It's okay. I want to show this.
Ms. Louise Hooper is Mr. Art Lucas's assistant. Mr. Lucas's wife's having surgery in Atlanta, so he's out of town, unable to be here tonight, so she's going to fill in for him and going to go over everything and hopefully she'll answer up a bunch of questions that's already gone on someone else.
Okay. Well, I'm Louise Hooper and mainly we would just want to tell you that you've listened to what many of you have told us about being concerned about the historical 250-year-old tree. So we listened to that, we've hired, and you know, we felt the same way, we love the tree. After all, we named it Oaks on the River. So we've hired two arborists and also a firm from Savannah that came down and they used some type of air machine where they can check the root systems at various intervals on the center of the tree. So upon their recommendations, we went back to Larry Bryson and he totally designed our footprint. So this is our new footprint that I want to show you. And I don't think everybody can see this. We are going to turn the rest, the current Development Authority building into the restaurant. And it will have a screen and porch and then of course, the deck back there, it'll be overlooking the river. Here, there's going to be porous parking or pavers that the arborist has said will not damage the tree root system. We had pushed the condos to the furthest eastern part of the property, so they'll be, you know, out, out here by, all by themselves. Phase two will be the hotel, the retail, and the marina. This will be at least two years away, but you can see here, here's the tree. This is in excess of 100 feet away from the tree. So the Darien News last week had an article saying that the critical root zone was 70 feet, will exceed that by at least 30 feet. So just want you to know, we have listened, we, we want to save the tree too. And I will read you this from one of the arborists. By making these changes, there will be minimal encroachment into the critical root zone and tree protection zone area around the tree, which encompasses both below and above ground tree parts. This modification should now keep the tree's root footprint close to the present root growth habit, which should not impact tree health and increase long-term survival. So, you know, we are, we feel like we're doing this with the redesign. We also have advice from the arborists about proper tree printing, about soil treatment, and they've given us, will give us instructions for the contractors to work around the tree and then during construction, both during construction and then afterwards also. I mean, we're going, and we will ensure that these instructions are, are followed. But I mean, Art's also talked to Buddy Sullivan, who, about the tabby ruins. And Art wants to help protect the ruins from human encroachment. And then with Buddy's help, he would like to add some signage about the history of the ruins, so we can all learn more about it. Paul Nix came to Art with an agreement that if by chance an artifact is found, that we will have a designated person that we can call to come handle the artifact and curate it. So there again, we are, we want to do everything we can to ensure, protect, and respect this Art's history, he settled in, his family settled in McIntosh in the late 1700s. His grandfather, Ian Thorpe, was a leading citizen here in McIntosh. Art grew up Harris Neck, went to Darien Elementary, and moved away to go to college and school. But once he sold his business, he came back to what he calls paradise. Art genuinely loves the southeast Georgia coast. And through his volunteer work, he's already beginning to make an impact. He is, uh, serves on the foundation board of the College of Coastal Georgia. He has personally endowed four-year scholarships, students only from McIntosh and Glen County. He is chairman of the board for the Communities of Coastal Georgia Foundation that gives grants to McIntosh, Glen, and Camden. He's offered to help pay for a hook and router truck that's really needed here in Darien. I mean, he's personally going to be spending, risking over $12 million of his personal money. So this will make a huge financial impact on Darien. If you look at the land, the way it's been used now for the last, I don't know how many years, a nonprofit organization and an older factory, which have had a lower financial impact on the tax base in Darien. So our goal is to be good corporate citizens with this land. We want to enhance the doubt of the Darien tax base. We want to, you know, enhance the Darien waterfront and in all of its environment. But in the meantime, we want to keep the history, the beauty, and the charm of the lagoes and the tabby ruins that we all love. So, thank you.
Louise, before we get all through, I had the opportunity, Art came by on Friday, as you know, when we went over this. And I think some of the details that you might have left out that are very important and everybody needs to know, is that now we don't have to move the sewer line.
Right, the easement.
By not moving that sewer line, we're not going to disrupt the roots again that were once disrupted, so that's a plus. The second thing is, is the walkway stays in place as it is right now, and that's public access now to the waterfront. And the third thing that she alluded to, while it is very important, is the porous concrete. It is a cutting-edge material and it's approximately, according to Art, the concrete won't start until 40 feet back from the tree. So, what I see it and the way we talked about it, I mean, he's made all the adjustments that I think that, that he can make.
Am I correct, the condos have been moved down to roughly where the jellyball plant is now?
Even past that.
Okay. Down around railway system.
Yeah. The railway system would be about right there.
And there from an aesthetic standpoint, where he swapped the condos and the restaurant, basically a route coming in off 7D, driving over the bridge, not looking at the condo, you're looking at a place to eat, which is a natural progression off 17, and then down 14 yards would be where the condos are.
I think for restaurateurs, this is actually a better option because they, it's a freestanding building, they can have excellent signage here, and then we'll have the parking along the street and here for their customers. And then the parking, of course, will be shared by the hotel once that's eventually done.
Just on one, just kind of, not quite aware of exactly where it's at. Put your red light on where the circle is, uh, at the bottom of the stairwell. Now come back up, you're right there. So all of that is a grass area, is where the walkway is now, the stage area. Everything is still going to stay the same on, uh, the, uh...
Yeah, all of this is, remains with Development Authority.
So none of that's going to be disturbed and people still going to have access to the dock?
And Larry Bryson, our architect, I mean, we are away from any of the ruins and mainly away from the tree.
But he has spent a considerable amount of time and money with regard to the tree and even he would brought it up again, it's Oaks on the River, not Subs on the River. He's well aware of that. And, I mean, that, he went to a lot of expense for this, the arborist and the redesign, which in my opinion, I can't find any problems.
And you're the?
The architect.
The architect. Is there anything that you want to tell us or that we might need to know on that?
I think Louise is pretty much...
Doing a great job.
Doing a great job. But if y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to, to answer those.
Okay. We're going to try, we want to do this in a very manner, because in a way, if anybody has a question, if you raise your hand, we can recognize you and we're trying to ask you a question. Is there any questions? Anybody have any questions? Yes, may I? State your name if you might mind.
Okay. Melissa Pope Scott. I, uh, this is a question, I think, for you, Larry. Will there be any attempt to, uh, for, oh, what's the help name? Like solar power, will there be any intent to achieve a LEEDs designated, you know?
Right. The LEEDs projects that we have done, they're very expensive. So what we do and we there are, is to incorporate the energy saving functions as we can and try to stay away from accreditation. Accreditation is a little misleading. You're required to have an Aja involved in that and then a person who actually manages it. Those two fees are about a half million dollars. So, so most developments just can't afford to add another half million dollars to a project to achieve that LEED certification. So what we do is incorporate the LEED, the saving side of it without having to do the certification.
So you're going to insulate it?
We're going to insulate while energy saving and quick like...
I didn't hear anything y'all asked or said, I'm sorry.
No, I told them, but...
Y'all hear?
Sorry, can you hear?
Yes.
Ma'am. Yes, ma'am?
Boy, young planter's native of Darien, will he see much on the rock in the shrimp boats?
And ma'am, Florida, just pointed out a while ago, it won't go...
That will go down as far as the ways are now.
Yes, ma'am, it won't go down below, uh, where the grass areas now, it's just top of the hill.
One other thing I suggested on Facebook, which most everybody reads, I said it wouldn't bother me if they sold a part of the right way and made it a one-way road going down to 14 George, if, um, if he needs more room for the tree roots.
And that's, uh, that's the reason I invited everyone to be here tonight, is you would get the, the truth behind everything instead of just what somebody's opinion on Facebook. I do appreciate everybody coming tonight. Uh, yes, ma'am?
Hi, Jennifer, I have two questions, I've heard information tonight, I want to clarify to everyone. Who owns the railway? Does the railway say where it is?
Thank you, Art Lucas, on this.
Yes, he, he does own that.
He walk the railway?
Yes, ma'am, when he redesigned, always designed everything, he needed more land and everything, am I correct? He invested more money in just, you know, to help save the tree and move everything around.
Okay, so the rail, not that I haven't been following the pipe, but will the railway say where it is or will it be removed?
We don't know that yet.
So it won't be a functioning railway?
We, we don't know that, no.
Okay, one other question. Who owns from the bottom of the hill, basically, onto the water?
That would be all of Art, that was his third, third transaction.
So where the, um, the stage is now, who owns that?
Oh, no, no.
All of that still be under the IDA, IDA, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we went under that, they talked about that. No changes are being made at all for that area, we talked about that. That's going to stay exactly the same.
He owns this to the water and this area mainly to the water and the jellyball factory.
All behind the jellyball factory, he does own down to the water.
Yeah, then I understand that, I was just curious about that.
Yes, ma'am, it's up in the, where the stage area and the grass and the docks and all that.
Could you clarify, clarify who owns this for Art Lucas?
Terry Chine.
Mr. Terry, that's wonderful, we want to thank you for being here tonight, he's a wonderful man and been doing a lot of great business here in town. You got something to say, Mr. Terry?
Yes, thank you, everybody, Terry Chine from the Darien Board. You know, this project actually, I've been here 19 years, I have been here 19 years, and the original, you know, the property, the jellyball property, just like a trash place, and we modified. Been 18 year over there, we, we know the city need to go forward to get it improved. So we are, actually, we compromised this idea to help, we need to relocate to the shoe factory. And we, we need to reinvest a lot of money to make it work. So it's not only for our personal, it's for the, you know, the society, community. So we need to find another dock to, to, you know, to accept jellyfish and processing. So this is, everything is for community. So let's, I hope everybody here together, we work together and then make our committee, you know, upgrade. And I have a company with Mr. Lucas, they have one property in Sea Island, adding their cargo tanks, and they manage the property very well. So I hope, you know, a lot of people try to, oh, I miss the old age, I miss the old age too, but if we can make our committee even better and still is beautiful, so why not? So that's the reason we, our company and even like railway, we just make the reason really. So we just want to, this project be success. It's not only for their investment, it's for all of Darien. I hope that one day, the Darien, the name just like the Sea Island. So I think it's, it's possible, really, if it's the Sea Island, yeah. So this is my, our purpose, and I am very happy to work with our committee from the first day to the now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Again, I want to thank you for all the jobs you've created here in the community.
And, and you know, talking about jobs, we've already had three people contact us about jobs for the hotel, which is two, three years away. Two of those live here in Darien that they now have to commute for their careers.
Yes, sir.
Bill Barton, just a couple of questions. So I think it's great that existing stairs, you're saying, will remain in place. Will that be, will that be there even when the hotel is built?
Yes, yes.
So will Art allow the public to cross that parking lot and come down those stairs if he's there?
Oh, sure. You talking about this, the stairs here or over here?
No, no, not the new, it's the ones that are existing depending with, with the several other projects. The double stairs that come down with the park. Those will not just stay in place?
Yes, those will not be touched whatsoever.
At any point in progress?
No.
So the public will be able to cross his property?
Sure, sure.
Okay. Other thing is, you know, access to the van stand is important for less of the fleet in other towns. And I know that Art, and he needs it, I understand that, for the, where the drive now comes down to that. How will people, how will equipment and trucks be able to access the van stand once this project is in place? What's the vision for that?
Are you talking about the drive that comes this way, under the bridge?
Well, it stops, of course, then it's grass, so there's no drive, is that term, right? There's no drive from there to the other end of the park with the van stand. How would, how would people be able to access and get equipment to the van, if they come down and buy the property and they get lost off? How does that work? I'm just trying to see how we have access.
The runway under the bridge is going to stay there, if, if that drive there and carry across the grass, there won't be any way to, to get there, just carry across the park. Okay.
Look, Louise, what he's asking about is that road that runs right beside the, the existing road that's between us and...
And the park.
The park, that's how they normally would... Oh, okay. I just wanted to clarify a little bit. I, I wasn't quite sure, yeah. And we, we don't know, I mean, you know, we have been scrambling in the last month just to get this done. There are a lot of other questions, I mean, there are going to be some other tweaks here and there, but this is the footprint, and this footprint will not be changed.
Yes, ma'am?
I just want to add what she's talking about. Over the last year, we were diligently with Art, I'm sorry, I'm making Art a little time, with Terry. And we weren't in the market to sell this property, we really liked what Art had to say when he came to us. And it took about a year for us to realize that this would truly benefit the community as a whole. And that was really his motivation for, you know, working with Art. And I have to say, even with the last real estate sale where you see where the rail is and the kayak place, we worked really hard to make sure that we had a good plan moving forward and that the utilization of the property and being able to respect that this is a shrimping industry and that they try and respect what brought this town to where it is and carry that forward as they make progress on this project. And I think they've been really deceptive to that. And I think you guys will appreciate it as they, they go through this development.
Any more comments? Yes, sir?
I think some of what I was going to say has already been said, but I think it's always, and Lloyd, you're there, I'm resident of McIntosh County. I've been in McIntosh County for, been a resident here for 30 years, been coming here for 50 years, and Art way predates me. And I've simply said before, he's, this is his home. And I've known him for a long time, and I think it's when somebody says, I can do a project like this, that it's real good to know a little bit about the person. And we've heard a good bit about the person tonight. I'd like to add to that, that I'm, I've known him personally real well, I hunted fish with him, got in the water with him, I've been to his projects on St. Simon's many times and seen what he's done there. And I know how much he loves this county, and I know he wants to do something here that is almost philanthropic, as you said a while ago, he's chairman of the foundation board, and he's become very philanthropic in, in later years, after he built the Empire in Atlanta. And I've worked with him on that foundation board, and there's some other board members here too, have been on that foundation and seen what it is that he likes to do. And I can assure you that with regards to the tree, with regards to the hotel, with regards to everything he's going to do here, he would never do anything that would in any way lead to embarrassment for him because he loves this county so much. But whatever he does, it's going to be jammed up and done right and something he can be proud of and all of us can be proud of, and he knows that he will never have to listen to any negativism about what he's done because that would just really destroy him because he loves this county so much and he wants to really do something nice here. And the good thing about it is that he has the wherewithal to do it. There are a lot of people who have the wherewithal to do it, but not who would do it. And he will do it and very likely, we've talked about this, very likely, he's not going to make a profit on this, he'll be in the grave before a profit is seen out of this, but he's still willing to do it because he thinks it will be a wonderful thing for the county and for the city of Darien. And I, I just wanted to be able to say that, and I appreciate you getting to get out of town.
Any more comments? Yes, sir?
My name is Joe Train. I would like to know what type of materials we're going to use to build this. Is it going to be stucco, is it going to be a metal roof, is it going to be tile roof?
It's a combination of terracotta tile, stucco on the exterior, and then some architectural detailing wood, some horizontal siding, some cedar shade material, which are hardy type materials, so they won't deteriorate. So that's the finishers.
And Joe, to further answer your question, a lot of the material that you can use, put it out in the, in the code, so you're welcome to, you know, copy that or whatever, but this has got a long ride to plan and zoning, too. I think the big hurdle tonight was, number one, was the tree seems to be solid act. Two, how much improved the width of the building. And the reason that happened is because of questions like yours and everybody else that had something to say last night.
Let's, let's not forget, I mean, just what Mr. Newberry said. I haven't known Mr. Lucas as long as you have, Mr. Newberry, but, you know, this whole city, we're, we're fixing to go through a big change. When they shut that bridge down, for this man to come in here and invest just to, just to get this far, that speaks volume to the man. This, this bridge is going to be a big deal for this city. This project is a big deal for this city. And I appreciate all y'all coming here, but I tell you, I, I think that, that this project, that bridge, it's a big deal.
Yes, sir.
I'm in Darien, I live in Darien County, I've lived there all my life, and I intend perhaps retire here at Darien. And my family and forefathers, all the way back Ofa, we do have a connection with Darien from Savannah's Indian Conservants and all, and I know that's not what I'm here to tell, I'm just making the point of my interest here. If I retire here, I do intend to come and embrace Darien and the habit to prosper, to prosper as the people that live here wanted to prosper. And I think Mr. Lucas certainly has that image in mind. I've seen his projects around the state, all around, at St. Simon's and Sea Island, and it's not that he's wanting to come in and, and change the heritage of, of Darien, he's wanting to preserve that heritage. And the heritage of Darien, it goes to the Civil War, it goes to Ofa, it goes to the settlement in Savannah, the general, to the breweries, the rum that was made here. And I'm here not to get any economic advantage, but to be a part of this community, to make it what his vision is, Mr. Lucas, and also what my vision is for Georgia and what this place can, can become. Southern Living has pinpointed Darien as one of the most beautiful small towns in Georgia. 20,000 population, 20,000 lakes. There were only three towns that were even mentioned south of May. Darien, of course, was the first, and St. Harriet's and Brooklyn last. But this project is a tremendous project, and we have people coming to this area to embrace the local people, the local concept of the heritage here. And I'll tell you, with the shrimpers, it's an agricultural project, I'm, I work with the Department of Agriculture, Commissioner Black, and we know that there's grants that can be gotten for the shrimpers to improve the economy of the shrimping industry, and we want to embrace that because it's a trade here that's going to develop. And this project is going to embrace that along with the local businesses that are already established here, and I hope that I can be a part of that as well. So that's my interest here. Thank you.
We appreciate it, we look forward to you coming on. Hey, if we can possibly listen or never come to you.
Just very briefly, I was wondering if the restaurant is considered phase one or phase two?
Yes. Phase, phase one will be the restaurant and the condos, and of course, the parking here. Phase two will be the retail, the retail hotel, and then the boat dock down here.
Very good, thank you. Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, my name is John Gibson. I live on St. Simon's Island with my wife, Al, who's over there. And a couple of years ago, we bought Cat Atlanta. And one thing I'm sure of is that change is inevitable, and it's going to happen. I think you've got a really well-thought-out situation that you're looking at. Art has made a lot of changes, a lot of concessions, and I'd like to invite all of you down to that little island just south of us and see what happens when you have development by people who aren't nearly as concerned about the well-being of the rest of the community. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Mark Miller from Grant Schellman Bus, at Southern Bus, and I wanted to let you know that we've got a delegation of six or seven people here tonight from, from North McIntosh County, where many of us have been involved in a number of projects for development. If you're familiar with the, with the health center there, the golf course, the condos that we developed there, and many of the other projects that we've done there, and we have been working closely with Art and want to throw our support behind what he's doing and encourage you to... he's doing and encourage you to take one at. As Lloyd pointed out, I've known Art for many, many years. I am also on the board with him of the foundation. He truly is a philanthropist, and he truly is an environmentalist. I happened to talk to him on the telephone this morning as, as he was having to take care of what he's taking care of in Atlanta, as he got off the plane about this project. He's very, very concerned about it, very willing to do whatever anybody needs him to do to be a part of the county. We discussed this property on Parrsnake. It's, I think it's about 1.8 miles of waterfront, waterfront property on North McIntosh County, and that is all in conservation easement. And he said there will never be any development there because of his interest in the, the environment. And so I wanted to point that out and also introduce a business partner that I've got, Mike Hardy. We are the Bill and Trishellman Bus LLC, which has done many of the projects in, in, in North McIntosh County. He wanted to make some comments about that.
Thanks, Martin. I don't know what more I could say. Terry, I know you commented about Sea Island. I don't know whether it will ever be a Sea Island. I'm not quite sure that's what we all, all want, and be a Sea Island anyway. But I'll tell you one thing that's encouraging about private public investment, to see a native son like Art come in here and have the passion and the caring for this county. You know, we're representing tonight really not just ourselves and, and our ideas, but there's a lot of kids out there in this community. They need help. They need hope. They need opportunities. They, and that's what something like this is, to have a development like that which you kind of kickstarted. Here we've got a vacant apple center over there that we're trying to do some things with, trying to get that jump started. Fifty-four thousand cars a day coming down Interstate 95. The comment was made, Darien is recognized as number one. You just saw Coastal Living come in, the top ten coastal communities. Darien should be that, not just because of the live oaks and all the purity and natural beauty, which we all love. We've got that in common with each other, regardless which side of the fence you're on. I think we all agree of that purity. But what makes it unique, those people, just like you're here tonight? So I, I just, I think it's to have someone like Art, to have the caring that he has. But it's more important than choice.
Yeah.
You know, they, they don't know what we're doing tonight. They're, they're struggling enough just trying to get into school system and deal with that with maybe their grandparents helping them go to school. And maybe what we're doing tonight really is going to jumpstart when they get a little bit older, they're going to have opportunities for this community to have the same quality of life that we all have. And I think that's so important. So, Roy, I applaud everyone being here. I think, I think it's nice, too, that everyone has their opinion, their ideas to discuss these things. But, but I truly applaud Art Lucas.
Thank you, sir.
And who he is and what he is.
We appreciate it. Everybody's comments and all is. Are there any more questions or comments? Yes, sir.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. This will come to me in time on Paul Dix, on putting his own words. But just a point of clarification. In front of the hotel, down toward the river from the hotel and the condos, will he be using that docking space for the boats coming to his hotel?
He is going to redo the dock. But that's phase two, that's, that's, you know, a ways away.
That's, that's the docks behind the jetty dock now.
Yes.
Now, would that be also available to shrimp boats or not?
Probably not.
No. I, 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 at this point, I would say no.
I think it starts at Thompson, and then it's back to Thompson, and then we'll still be nice.
They still will have their dock. Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
So, my, 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 Vicky Love, my husband, I live in my home in Tallahassee right now. So when we come over the bridge on Seventeen and we see the shrimp boats there, often like Fifteen, I guess, are, is, will there still be space for all of them, and will we see the marina? What's?
Yes, sir. They still will have private docks from, you know, Thompson, Boone, and all of this. Still going to have the, the private docks, as you see when you come across the bridge. His is only going, right now, Mr. Lucas only comes from the railway, back to Seventeen from the railway, back the other way is still in a private dock.
They'll still be there, but they're still farther down.
So we're not pushing, we're not pushing any shrimp boats out of Tampa. We, we know, you know, how important shrimping is, and it's pretty much, you know.
And I, I should comment now, that there's a plan, I'll, I'll tell you, to come along with this part of shrimping industry here. That's, that's some of my thinking, that's what I'm injecting here, that the shrimpers are not being left out of this, and the businesses in this community are going to be enhanced.
And I've talked with a couple of shrimpers today, and they said that they've already, Mr. Lucas has already got in touch with them and talked with them, and they're all, they're all happy with, with things. Yes, sir.
Molly, relative with Development Authority, I just wanted to say again, I think we, we covered over the past few weeks about what this means to the community. The Development Authority started working with Art Lucas seventeen years ago. And what will be, we look at sixty-four jobs in downtown Darien when this is complete. We're talking about tax dollars of, will be over a half a million dollars a year. I mean, there's some economic benefits, and that's just of that project. You're not talking about the things that will happen around the, because of it, which is what I really want to focus on right now, is it's going to create new opportunities for business people. It's going to create opportunities for companies who are there now, the turnip greens or whoever is out there. Makes it much more viable when you have people coming into your community. I mean, what his plan is showing right there is forty-eight hotel rooms. You know, and let's just assume thirty-five of them are used tonight. That's a lot of people coming downtown with some purchasing power, and it's going to benefit our community, not just that location, but it's going to help all of us.
Good. Real quick, another thing, talking about the Department of Agriculture, that I missed off was Commissioner Black. We are right now developing Trail Seventeen, coming right through, right downtown Darien. And all these turnip green to chocolate factory, the, the Georgia grown is going to have a big presence in Darien. And when that happens, anybody along that U.S. Highway from Savannah all the way through Grunde is going to be focused. And Darien is certainly going to be the heart of that thing. And this development is, is going to be a magnet draw of all people coming from New York all the way down to Eastern Seaboard.
Just a quick question. Paul, I know this information comes out of time, and I recognize you all have a way to go, so, I mean, I'm not trying to pitch up a spot anywhere. So with the condos, will it still be the eighth with original agreement, or has that number changed?
It's twelfth.
It's twelfth now.
It is twelfth.
Will it be any retail space in that building? Is it all shipped to the old?
That's a great question, because originally there was, originally in the center was the restaurant and retail, and the answer is now no, because of the location. We took the retail out, and of course, number one, we took the restaurant out, and then the retail will be part of phase two right here.
So that the additional retail wasn't currently visioned in the hotel? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, well, I'm sure there'll be some within the hotel, but there's going to be a freestanding building. Here's Fort King George. Here's the retail.
Where the IDA building was?
Sir?
Where the IDA building was, with this addition of that?
No, here's the Development Authority.
Right.
That, that will be totally restaurant.
Okay.
This is a separate freestanding retail building.
Got you.
Here's the hotel.
So, please, just from your original plan, the basic retail, which is retail owned restaurants, is comparable to what was on the original plan in square foot?
Okay, that was my question. So the square, the original plan, which had retail in the entire bottom floor, that's just being replicated elsewhere?
Absolutely.
The same, same here on square footage as it was originally?
This is approximately four thousand square feet, and Larry helped me, three, oh, two thousand, two to three thousand.
So you're just shifting, is it?
Yes.
Okay. I do like, want to, I want to say, I see a lot of elected officials, school board, county commissioner, IDA members, the DVA chamber. Being, being in your role, do you have any comments or questions y'all would like to say?
I actually signed up to be on the agenda.
Yes, ma'am, I'll say that.
I'm Mandy Harrison with the Chamber of Commerce, and I want to echo basically pretty much everything everybody's saying. Wally and I had a discussion about this project and how, once we get this movement, it's going to support our businesses that we have now. The biggest request we get is more traffic in our downtown area, and this is going to produce that, more traffic. We have festivals, we have Second Saturday. We, we encourage people to come. We want more walking traffic, we want more shopping traffic, we want more people to support our local businesses. We have a, a initiative called McIntosh Now, and I see several people in here that are on the, the task forces. Tourism is one of the biggest things that we support in the chamber because we run the visitor center as well as the chamber. With this hotel, if, just, it's a rough figure, it will produce an additional eighty-eight thousand dollars for the city to produce more tourism product. Another twenty thousand for the, the visitor information center to promote the community, to develop products. So this is something that is very, I think Mr. Lucas is very mindful and listens to everybody and listens to the concerns, and if not, we're not going to explode like St. Simons. I think he's very mindful to be, to listen to our community and what we're looking for. The one thing I will say, and, and for those of you that are on the Rants and Raves page on Facebook, if some of y'all could go in and dispel some of these rumors of moving the tree and, yeah, building a fourteen-story building, this, this footprint basically doesn't change any view that you have of, of the river, because it's not a high-rise. It's already a commercial spot. It's already a resident commercial spot. It doesn't change the footprint at all. It just improves our community in the way we need it to be improved.
I think I'll add to that. I'm also on the board for the Chamber as well with Mandy, and I also work at Skippers. And I will tell y'all, just working in the hospitality industry, people don't want to come into our beautiful city and stay on Interstate. Why would we want them to be out there? Don't we want them to be here and embrace what we have here? So, I mean, I think it's, I mean, I'm just echoing everything over. It's all positive, I feel like. I feel like it's, we're all on board, but everybody's usually informed, and again, thank y'all for coming tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question.
I'm Scotty, when I felt, I've lived here in Darien now for fifteen years, and I'm a Georgia native. I have a question about where are all of these people going to park?
There's on-street parking here. There's, there'll be parking added, and here again, this is, you know, Larry, speak, speak this. The park is here. Thank you.
Good question, Scott. I see that you have parking a lot in front of condo residence, so I'm curious about the parking that may be needed for all of the sector commerce and revenue that's going to be generated.
Right. See, the condominium actually has underground parking, understructure parking, so all of this parking is actually under the building. So there's a hundred and thirteen parking places through here, not counting any of this that's on the street. Those are for the motel and also for the restaurant. Art has also developed these along the street at his expense, really just for the use of people. You know, a project will use it certainly also, but, but none of that parking counts toward what is needed for the project.
The parking on the street will be currently what is the right of way parking that exists?
Correct, except it'll be an improvement.
And the hotel, just to put it out there, is a destination hotel, and it's a forty-room hotel, so it's not going to be this giant office hotel with thousands of people coming to stay in it at one time. So a hundred and thirteen kind of covered that.
Jean Monstrant, I live in North McIntosh County. I have thirty years in the hotel hospitality industry. Can you give us an idea of the branding of the hotel? Is it a motel or a hotel?
It will be a boutique destination hotel.
An independent, or will you try to brand it?
You know, that, we're still two or three years away, so we have not, Art will be looking for maybe a partner. I know with marketing, it helps to be branded, but I, he loves the independence, you know, he, he likes that. And as many of y'all who know him have alluded to, he, he, everything he does is first class, five-star, and that's the way this hotel would be.
So it would be four five-star?
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
I know we've all talked about the, like, the traffic, you know, vehicles coming off Ninety-Five, but we really haven't talked about the traffic that would be coming up the river. I mean, if this is truly going to line up and be in what you guys' vision to be, you're going to have, you know, yachts and, you know, higher-end boats, higher-scale boats coming in, so you're going to see a greater group of individuals navigating to this, this destination and utilizing, you know, our infamous general's cut, because that's an amazing feat that has occurred, you know, here. We all take advantage of it, we just drive straight through there and go muck-hatch, but in reality, I mean, that's an amazing thing that happens. So we'll be able to focus on those things, and that's really some of the things that I've actually heard some of the Coast Guard members that are actually been talking through this process. So we kind of didn't mention that, but I did want to make sure that, you know, we, we all acknowledge that that's going to be a great benefit to our community.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. All right. Is that it? Any more comments, questions? I got you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, again, Paul Dix, speaking as a board member of the Lower Oklahoma Wharf Society. We all love our, have your ruins. And I mentioned, Louis, you mentioned that Art was interested with, with, to protect them. Do you know any active measures he will take, specific measures he will take to protect the ruins?
Well, I'm, I'm sure he would love to consult with you about that, and of course, Betty Sullivan, he's already talked to. I mean, we are open, as y'all have found out, to any advice and comments. I mean, he definitely wants to protect the ruins. And add to it, you know, with, with signage.
Okay. I do appreciate everybody coming. I made a promise on, on Facebook that we would try and answer all your questions. Also, my council lady, Good Year, made the same promise. If you come tonight, we'll give you opportunity to ask questions or make comments, and I do appreciate everybody for being here. Next on our list is, and if you already had your thoughts answered, that's fine, Mr., let's see, Martin Miller.
I have, I'm working, thanks very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you. I feel I've updated. Lord Newberry?
He, he's there.
Just left. Thank you. Rebecca Yeovens?
I'm Claire.
Okay.
I didn't realize I was going to have to keep my group, the medical side, I have PhD in ecology and environmental science, but I'm at least a few infamous, my great uncle was the guy who pulled me, he's a catfish on the river upstream, and it turned sideways and jammed the river up, and it actually drained. The shrimpers down here couldn't figure out why they were sitting on the bottom, they thought they had a little tide, but anyway, so I do have some connections to the river. But I, I'll have to leave because my thoughts are kind of scattered, otherwise, I'm even older than Art Lucas. If any of us had been asked prior to any of this to identify, take your GPS out, walk the town, find the single aesthetically most valuable spot in our town, just think about it. If you have a friend from New York or California, where do you tailor to walk in our town? I think by how we know where it is, which was why there was some uproar, not that we don't support progress in our town. The, when I was teaching environmental science, of course, I read a lot about leading planners and architects, and one of the things they seek to do is identify that. That's the first step, the goal, is to find the places you don't want to develop, the place, even if it's a single tree, right? And then welcome these spaces that are eyesores or abandoned industrial sites to be developed. And so I'm glad that our input has resulted in some, some shifts. Areas that are rapidly growing and, and overflowing their boundaries are seeking to backtrack. And what they're seeking to do is to identify and try to recapture some of the small town stuff that Darien has. Darien is number one according to me. Many, many magazines and stuff on and off the beaten path map because it's uniquely Darien. path map, because it's uniquely Darien. It is a sea island. Some towns want to develop so badly, like Helen, they don't have their own identity, so they make something up and become a foe. You're a Ian-Boy, right? And we don't, we don't want that, we want to be uniquely Darien with our sprint votes and our view. And when I was in the ninth grade, our English teacher gave us some good advice, she said, what you are to be, you are becoming, and so we need to think about that, and we don't want to go through a big battle every time Darien becomes what Darien's going to become. We want Darien to be, again, as I said, uniquely Darien. GRM, the anthem was, I had to look it up, I didn't know, is the first to say, we should evaluate citizens and their leaders, their elected officials, by what they do, put in place the policies to bring this good for, for the best people. And I'm so delighted to hear that Art Lucas is such an ardent and interested in kids, because I don't want to give up our potential for environmental education, and I hate to be the one to throw a wrench in it, but if we want to take this plan and please everybody, we will look really seriously at that building that's ideally there, we say we're going to have all these people coming in, they want to know about our river, they want, and we've got kids and we want to do something for them. So, let's think about it, what is it we're really doing? What are we going to put in place that's benefit, benefit the kids coming into town who are moving here, the kids coming on boats up the river to learn about it, and the kids in our local schools here? And so, we hope building that will lend itself to a beautiful Omaha Interpretive Center of War without much occupation whatsoever, and there probably many philanthropists too will contribute to having that space dedicated to environmental education.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. If I would put you on the spot, would this development, do you see any public hazard or unsafe?
No, not for what I'm referring.
Okay. All right, next is Mr. Paul News. Okay, we'll hear you after. Okay, Mr. Mark Carden, you already spoke.
Let me make one note, if I could, please. You know, I think of the timing of this, you're so brave, are you, I mean, July the first, the state of Georgia is beginning a rural initiative, and as a compliment, I think, to Governor Deal and the fact where he's appointing some people, and so to look at rural areas, see what they're need, see how private-public can work together, and what better, I mean, y'all saw last June, the Georgia Chamber of Congressmen, is that when they came out with the fact of report? The only county on the coast that's going to lose population was McIntosh County. Now, you know, that's, we, that's why we did accept that, none of us have accepted that, we have initiatives in place to change it, so the timing is perfect for what he's trying to do, to have someone, private-public, to come in and jumpstart the decision, and have the rural initiative, so I'm very excited, because the opportunity's great for us, and what we can all do together, and I also hope that, like you, I hope we have more meetings like this, where you've got ideas, and people's thoughts, that, well, this is how you'd manage for McIntosh now.
Okay, yes, sir. Mr. Karen South.
So, I live on Cary Rath, and I think last month, my uncontrollable emotional speech kind of started some of this going, and I just wanted to say, initially, when I started trying to, you know, make people talk in town, it was for a love of a tree that I have, not the development, and I think that there was a mis-understanding of what a lot of us were trying to do, we were not trying to stop Art Lucas in his tracks, or stop this development from coming. I'm a business owner here, by putting something like this here, it can only benefit my business, and I understand that, and I think that that was a misconception, and I think it's just because my emotions got the best of me last month, but I think it also made Art Lucas take all of us seriously and understand that what he's putting here, you know, needs to fit Darien, and I think that this new plan that he's come up with is amazing, I think it is phenomenal. You come over the bridge, and you're looking at a beautiful restaurant now instead of a condo, the condos have moved down, which I think is phenomenal, so I feel like it's a win-win for all of us, you know, but I do go back to what my initial initiative was here, and that's to preserve and save a tree that I am just madly in love with, and I think, and I know that's silly, and, you know, I mean, by no means am I consider myself a tree hugger until I fell in love with this one tree here, but what's on the agenda for you as a board is to deem this tree a specimen tree per the city code, and I think that by doing that, still allows or ensures that this is the footprint that is going to be built on that property, it allows him to build this footprint that most of us seem here tonight that we love and agree with, the ones that maybe weren't so sure about the development before, I think can look at this and really understand that he's taken our cares and concerns into consideration, and this is a much better plan that he's come up with. But I still think that by deeming this tree a specimen tree, it ensures in five or ten years, when Darien takes off, that where this small parking lot is, where that tree's root system is, that you can't build a four-story garage in the future. So, I still ask you, that even though I think things are phenomenal, and I think that the county and the city and, you know, the residents here, I think it would ease their mind a little bit by still deeming that tree a specimen tree, and ensuring that the future of that tree, which was my whole goal in this from the beginning, it wasn't to stop development, it wasn't to put Darien, I mean, that does me no good, I'm a business owner here, the more people that come to town, like I said, is only going to prosper my business, and hopefully I can work full-time at my business with my husband, instead of driving over the river to work every day. So, but again, like I said, my initial initiative here was to deem the tree that I love, and I, you know, fallen in love with, got married under, and the whole nine, to deem that a specimen tree. It doesn't stock any of this, it doesn't hinder any of this, it just ensures that this development here that we're seeing tonight is the one that's going to be developed. And so, again, I just ask you, that's what's on the agenda, it's not the development, it's not, you know, all these things, it's, especially it's a tree that we just want to preserve, and I think by, by doing that, it allows the development to come, which is a win-win, and it also puts in the books, and ensures, and eases the mind of the citizens here in Darien who started this movement over a tree, and I know that's so silly, but it, it, it eases our minds that that tree's still going to be there, and it doesn't hinder the development in the process.
Yes, ma'am, I'm going to put my, uh...
We have a new building sparker, code enforcement officer, so I'm going to sit in on the block tonight and let him correct me, before, Mr. Karen, before, like she said, if somebody wants to come in and build us a building and where that parking lot, they have to go through us again, right, or whoever.
Absolutely, this is, that area is, believe it or not, also historic district of the part of the cultural heritage tourism corridor that comes down seventeen, and that is designated as a historical district, so anybody wants to put any building up, not only do they have to go through the building permit process, but they have to go through the code compliance process before they can ever even get to a building permit. Okay, thank you.
I do agree with, and I appreciate your love for the trees and all, I've had seven other people come and ask me, with seven other trees, to make them specimen trees, and your love for the trees, I fell in love with a tree here in Darien, I got married under, bought the property around the tree and everything, it's right outside of my house now, and it's older than, actually than this tree, but I got to digging in what all them involved with making a tree a specimen tree, and I've talked with a couple people in the state and said that, of course, it's, you know, city, it's our decision, but they advised against it, because we're in, city manager, I think, also, at Chatham, he can correct me, but, that is really putting the city, you know, on the spot by making a tree a specimen tree. Now, they did say, and they advised that there is some protective acts that we can instill against it without making it a specimen tree, and like I say, the only problem is like that, all these other people wanting all of these trees, just about every tree in the city, they want to make them specimen trees.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I've been to Georgia, six months ago, I didn't even know what a specimen tree was, now I feel like I can get a PhD. I've been studying and reading everything, I know our attorney is aware of some, because there's been legislation set up, there are committees in the state of Georgia to deal with the fact of city government getting involved in private properties concerning these types of things. I'm going to say something that's going to lead to it. Skippers, I think Mossy, I was there the other day, and you had one, two hundred teachers or something that came in, you had a lot.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five that just came in, I was in the meeting.
Actually, they're from, they're from Hacksden, Georgia, actually.
Hacksden, Georgia, and many of my friends, I wonder why, I'm like, you're from Savannah, great restaurants. Carlos, I meet with people from around the country, busloads come to Skippers. Pulitzer Prize winner, poetry, now is the poet lord of the whole United States of America in this city, people I've met with at the Skippers restaurant, and the list could go on and on, Georgia Public Broadcasting, the work that we're doing with Kumbaya, and the, it's here today, want to meet them, Skippers. I say that because I have a great concern, do I want to make the same decision I did years ago, long before Skippers was there, long before the condos, it was just some marsh and a lot of hopes, and I'm concerned about that, because I was on the other end. If it was less up to me, there would be condos over there, that lie in guitar and feathers, along with others, there definitely would not be a Skippers, because I was right at about a hundred percent against it. I told my fellow councilmen, seeing that this one will probably determine my political career in the city, we have to make tough decisions, and this might be the one that will make a great, perhaps all of us sitting up here. So, in a little while, we're going to find out, I don't want to make the same mistake twice, I don't want to make the same mistake twice. Thank you, Mr. News.
We actually had another condo that was going to come in, they looked for about, split vote, voted against it, so it's not, you know, we want everything built up and everything, but if one wants to pass for the city, and that's why I have all these meetings, and I ask everybody to tell them, you didn't put us in here to vote our opinion, you put us in here to vote, you know, the majority of, it's us people, not board people. So, do, thank you, any more comments?
What Karen was saying too, I mean, this whole thing, we said it, we're going around the, around the tree right now, but to, for lack of a, not making this a circuital argument, but it's brought to light, the city's got a lot of work to do as far as inventory of our trees and our canopies, and I think it's brought us all aware that we need to pay attention to what's going on. The specimen tree designation is a very serious designation, it limits the property, it limits the tree, you all have read it, just like Mr. Lysin said, he's got a PhD, well, I'm not too far behind him. You know, I will talk with Mr. Braun, I don't know if there's any additional protections that we could put on, stopping short of a specimen tree?
Well, as Karen alluded to earlier, it is in an overlay district, it is in a historic overlay district, but you go check that out, that imposes some additional requirements on the business of selling in that area. So, there's a lot of zoning and regulatory protections already in place, and I think, as the city manager said earlier, this still has a long road to hoe through the planning zone commission, they've got a lot of work to do on this issue as well. We've got a conceptual drawing now, but getting into the, to the nuts and bolts of this, and the meat of this, the materials, and I heard, I heard some very good questions tonight, what it's going to be made of, I think Joe was interested in that, all that's going to be reviewed by the Plan and Zone Commission, and they're going to determine, first of all, meets the ordinances both of the, of the basic zoning and the overlay district, and then if it meets, obviously, state law, and the designs and concepts are going to be thoroughly vetted there, and that's what that process is for. At the conclusion of that, it still has to come before city council, so we've got a long road to hoe here, and I think it's important to point out that, I think the developer heard you loudly and clearly, and I think he's going to the table and completely redrawn this project. I'm, I'm sure Mr. Bryson's been paid handsomely, so he spent some money on this redrawn project, and the mayor said it early on, I wish we could always have this many people at meetings that are curious as to what's going on in government, and not on Facebook, come to the meetings and you'll find out, and your voice was heard and made a difference. I mean, we had a lot of great questions in here tonight, a lot of, a lot of great comments, and Mr. Lucas, I think his track record is he's a first-class developer, he's heard him, and he's made some serious adjustments here. I was blown away when I saw it, to be quite honest. Your voices were heard, they were acting on.
But I still think that elephant in the room is, they want to know, the people want to know, we're going to deem it as specimen tree.
Well, we still, and, and...
They still want to, I don't want them to think we're ignoring that question.
We've still got some more work to do on that.
Right, I agree, I still think we're ignoring that.
Right, yes, ma'am.
I'd like to say also that there's three more very magnificent oak trees that you had down the road.
One's at my front yard.
And, no, there's three there, and of course, you know that one Wald Street, the porch, porch, that's where it's located.
That was it.
And even divided, though, that's why my suggestion was, and I think the city could help with this, I'm glad people are aware of parking problems and things like that, and I think that it's a possibility that you could make pork in Georgia, and, you know, give some, make a city bar down those three trees right there, you know, that's, uh...
And that's, and that's what we say, we ask if people, don't spray chemicals around these oak trees, you know, dress.
Well, there, there will be...
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, I'm just trying to make it easy for you. We've lived on that property for like the last, I know I've lived there for like the last eleven years, it's been like twenty-four hours a day, but, you know, I think the city's done a really good, actually excellent job in protecting the trees. An example, when we did construction two years ago on that property, we actually had to go to Brad Cook at the top, which was the city manager, and say, okay, we need to trim some trees up, and the tree was actually sitting in the middle of where the building is, and we had to go through a tremendous process, so they're actually already protected, if they're X number of feet away from Highway Seventeen, who's already had it designated, and I don't remember what the designation's called, but it took me three and a half months just to get permission to trim limbs, I got the feeling we're in good shape.
And I will assure everybody here, the council has not sat idly back during this whole process with Mr. Lucas or anything else, there's plenty of conversations that each council member, inclusive of the mayor...
Has had.
...with Mr. Lucas to try and get this thing ironed out to the point that it is right now, and I'm sure they're going to do the same thing with the tree, and they've always done a good job, at least since I've been here, is they found the middle road, and with that design, they found the middle road, I think Mr. Lucas took it a little harder than the, than the council did, but they know, they know the issue, they understand the issue, and they've worked through it, so a lot of this credit goes to them.
Okay, thank you, sir. And that list of names, pretty much the same names that I put on agenda speak tomorrow, the only other one is Ms. Alberta Mavry, and I ask you, and she's done a great job with this, but I ask you, when you fill out a request to be on agenda, if you're not going to tell us your name, but if you'll give us a little bit of what we're going to talk about, then we're able to do some research on that question, otherwise, I'm just going to tell you, you're going to come by next month, I need to research it.
Mr. Mayor, could you, we've got Jane and Bill back there, I know they're on agenda for tomorrow, for morning conversation, since we...
All, all we want to say is business owners in the tourism industry here in McIntosh County, we fully support it. Is that first by Mr. Lucas? We would give a great...
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Your place has looked wonderful there on the Blue Herring Inn, I don't see bridges, and it's, it's very beautiful in the way they keep it up and everything. Okay, the only other one is Ms. Julie South, Keep McIntosh Beautiful, they'll give us an update. It's open.
So you can come by, uh, Julie? I'm not going to say too much, not everybody's been here long enough already, I'll be back tomorrow night, but I just wanted to tell you about a couple of things that are going on with McIntosh Beautiful that affects the city. And the main one is this post-war litter, cigarette litter campaign that has been made possible by Keep America Beautiful grant for organizations up and down the coast here doing a summer campaign that will include cigarette-free cigarette litter receptacles for the city. And I already talked with Stacy the other day and some other folks, Mr. Sweetsie, about placement of, and will be some educational elements to that, awareness, social media, video, all kinds of things, just to make people more aware of the fact that cigarette butts are litter and they're toxic. They don't biodegrade, plastic filters and so forth. And one of the main dangers of that is the cigarette litter getting into the water. So that's our main focus. We're going to have a special, we're going to have things this month, July and August. And so hopefully by the end of that campaign, somebody will have seen something or done something that will, that they're rethinking about the problems with cigarette litter, maybe changing that paper a little bit. So please stay tuned for that. We had an article in the paper a couple weeks ago that was kind of an open view of that, but these things will be rolling out pretty soon. I just wanted to quickly say about our abandoned buildings program with our children to take down abandoned elevated buildings in the county and here in Darien. We removed a burn structure a week or so ago. We have two or three in our sights right now, we're working with the owners to get those completed. And then we have, these are, these are some that have come to us, but we also are targeting properties a little more now that we see as real high sources in our community. So I just wanted to know that that program is ongoing and it tends to kind of go in bits and starts. We haven't had any activity for a while, and right now we just have a ton of applications, so moving through those. The last one is, concerns our vehicle donation program. This is a Keep America Beautiful program that we benefit from. And people in our county can donate cars, and in Darien, of course, can donate cars through this program as long as they are the title holder of the car and, or the vehicle, and it's all kinds of vehicles, trucks, cars, jets, geese, boats, construction, parking lot, all kinds of things. And we used to get a fairly small percentage of that because it is a national program, but they've changed that and we now get 50% of the sale of any vehicles that are donated. So that can be quite a shot in the arm for Keep McIntosh Beautiful if people will donate those. And they can learn more about that either by calling Keep McIntosh Beautiful number or go to our website, keepmattoshbeautiful.com.
And they get a receipt for that or link it off.
Yes, and they, right, it benefits, you get rid of a vehicle you don't need or want anymore, and you also get the paperwork to turn that into a tax deduction. All right, thank you all then.
Okay. Miss Ma'am, you have a question?
I did, but I'll first something out there since this is the workshop. June 30th, we have Blues on the Glove, which will be music and fireworks at the waterfront. We also have, at 5:00 that night in the waterfront park is a watermelon social for McIntosh Now to get everybody aware of this initiative. So we'd love for everybody to come. It is free this year because we've had some very generous and wonderful sponsors. So please come out, bring your picnic baskets. We will have some local vendors selling and we will, they'll sell a little bit of food and we will have adult beverages for sale also.
Thank you, ma'am.
June 30th, 5:00. See you all then.
Kerry, do you want to speak again or you're okay? John Reed and Elizabeth, your name come up on my list again? Okay, I want to overlook just in case. Okay, that's take care of our visitor presentation, correct? I appreciate it. Next is my correctors, no unfinished business?
That's correct.
Do want to thank and congratulate the board. I think the last four or five months, we really haven't had any unfinished business, but they're doing a great job at getting our business taken care of so we can move on. Next is new business, Consider Advertisements for Two, planning and zoning board members?
That's right.
And this is where, this is where each and every one of y'all can help us out and get involved. When we put these ads out for board members, we ask you to join them. And we will take action on that tomorrow. Next would be Consider Propose for the GMA, Garm, Firefighter Cancer Benefit Program, Kerry, we'll also take action on that.
I just said we've got to have it.
And that is pretty much state mandated cancer policy for our, for us. And we do encourage you, we need volunteers from our fire department. And it don't matter if you don't want to go inside the burning house with these people to help roll hoses and have some different things and help us out, so we do need you. Last item, let's put everybody listening.
Wait, Mr. Mayor, let's catch you before you get out of your way. Because everybody's talking about how they like Darien being clean and whatnot. Well, thanks to y'all's splash dollars, down there is a brush truck, a brand-new truck that's out there for y'all to look at when we get caught up on the brush. But please stop by, we've got the keys for the mayor, for whoever. And I think he's going to do a little demo, he was trying to learn how to use it today.
I got good at it. It's right out, right out. Sorry, limb trucks are picking up stuff. And just to let people know, we know you guys want your limbs stacked up, tell our truckman that, but we got boat trucks going to be running, double shift, we can get everything picked up. We do have several water links and we're working on all of that, so. Next item, that's pretty good to say, in conclusion. Consider Resolution 2018-3 to adopt the fiscal year 2019 annual budget, and we're going to discuss that.
Yes.
And don't forget, as we put in the paper tomorrow night, 5:00 public hearing on the budget.
Yep, 5:00.
5:00 on the budget tomorrow. We've got, we're going to bring dinner tomorrow. Okay, and then my correctors, no other questions tomorrow? Anybody?
I just want to say, Michael Hardy said something very important. He said several things, but one thing he said is, he talked about the beauty of the people in this town. And not just, not just our town, but the people, is what they get, people. Thank you, Mr. Hardy.
I do want to say another quick thing is if you see paper on the ground, don't mind who put their picket up. But the main thing I want to point out, I want to congratulate and thank our police chief and our police department. We had, everybody called to me, we had a couple of burglaries and all, it didn't take them for just a little while and caught the culprits on that, so. If you see something that looks suspicious, don't hesitate to call them and bother, call 911, whatever. Bother, you see something suspicious, call, if you just look out, so that's none of my business, or I'm not calling about that, who is? And that's the only way that we're going to be able to, to help him out. But I do want to thank him, his department, and, and how we can...
I did have, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
I did have a citizen call me, just on the way over here, reported he had some things missing from the condo. So I told him to get in touch with investigator, first across the room, and reported, he didn't even check until today, so.
He's probably part of it.
Yeah, he's part of it.
And that suspect's been apprehended, I believe.
Yeah, we're still looking for two, is that right?
One.
One?
We got two of the three already.
All right, you did it.
So if you see anything that looks suspicious, whatever, don't hesitate to run them and say it's okay, then don't stop calling and we need you too. Keep your journey.
That's being a good guy.